Construction hopefully a year from now, summer of twenty twenty one. Uh, building repair fund, uh, lowered the request for that, I believe. Yep, um, we've been setting aside some money for a number of years. Uh, we're still contemplating what we're going to do with the LIA building. Um, as I conveyed to the budget committee members, I believe via email. Uh, the board did offer that, uh, the, no, offered, uh, offered the ability to have an article seeking to gift that to either Lincolnville Improvement Association, the Lincolnville Historical Society, or some combination thereof. Uh, those two groups have politely declined that offer. Uh, we are now, or the board is now contemplating what to do next, um, with a unstated goal, I think, of having something to the voters in June. Uh, that could be a substantial amount of money, or would be, um, the, this.
Sorry, substantial just doesn't.
It's just, it's a, so, you know, this isn't the form for it, but it's just such an incredible going through this and looking at like just the, what? The increase of the capital improvements being, you know, not insignificant, a hundred and, you know, uh, and and then to think about the money, uh, you know, uh, involved there, it's just, it's like, I can't actually doesn't even, okay, anyway, like, whatever, I'm just taking out loud, and I probably shouldn't.
Alright. Um, moving down the requests, um, solar array purchase. I recall last year we, um, created a plan, uh, to purchase the solar array when it first becomes available to us. Uh, we've been trying, we, we started with a, uh, roughly a third of the anticipated cost last year, a third this year, a third next year. We'd have the money available to us. Should it still seem like a good idea when it would becomes available to us, we'll have the money. And if it doesn't, we'll go to Plan B, whatever that is. Uh, athletic infrastructure. Um, last year we had some discussions at budget time about the possibility of tennis court resurfacing and or adding, uh, pickleball lines to the tennis courts. We did not have a cost of that, um, available to us. Last year we put thirty five hundred dollars, uh, into the budget, which was approved. Uh, we had an evaluation done of the facility by a reputable, uh, firm who gave us an estimated project cost of a hair under fifteen thousand dollars. I included the request of eleven thousand five hundred for that in the capital improvement budget. And then we've had some, uh, ongoing discussions about ball field drainage and design. And the rec committee had asked for thirteen thousand five hundred to be included in there, in the budget, which we put in capital improvement.
David, can we go back to the tennis court resurfacing?
We can.
Uh, the reputable firm that came and looked at it, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't they say that they thought it was in fairly serviceable condition?
Yes, um, they were actually pretty surprised at how good a condition the tennis courts were in. Uh, those tennis courts, I believe, were constructed about a dozen years ago. And the recommendation, of course, this comes from people that do the work, the recommendation was that you resurface courts every five years. And they were shocked that we'd had twelve.
And remind me, there was two different prices, correct, there is a price to?
There was a price to coat what we have over there with a similar product. Um, and then there was a price to put down a, uh, rust inhibitor before painting the courts. If you go look at the courts themselves, they're pockmarked with, eh, dined quarter-size rust, what looked like rust spots. You say, what is that? And it's believed that in the pavement underneath the paving has whatever would rust in the, in the, and not in the asphalt, in the aggregate that was, that was paved and over time it has basically bled through. And they call it a rust inhibitor that they put down. It does not block it, it's not called a rust block, so it eventually will come back, but it won't come back as quickly. And then they've got a price per pickleball court to paint pickleball.
Could you tuck that in for next time? Cause my memory is just so fuzzy and I would appreciate being able to look at those numbers again. And also, I don't know if anyone else on the board can remember, but I feel like our conversation last year floated around the concept of appropriating a portion of resurfacing the tenants' courts, not going full freight in one or two years, but fire truck styling it.
Well, we did have that conversation. And the other part of that conversation is nobody knew what the cost would be.
Yeah.
And when person from that, and the request was made that we have somebody that knows the talking. We had the person come and he was shocked that we'd gotten twelve years on it for what we had. And said, most of them, they do after five. I budgeted the whole thing, if you want to cut it back, we can.
Okay.
I have a question from the discussion about changing and having the tennis court be smaller. And then having the pickleball, was that a big discussion about that?
It's an ongoing discussion.
Okay, but that being said, that who would make that decision or how would that decision be made where the tennis courts are used all the time? So I don't know how even, how that would work out. May not be the right time to bring that up, but that has been my concern all along, cause I, I go by there all the time.
They don't change the track of the court, they just add lines. So when you're playing tennis, the pickleball lines are there.
What happens is though, excuse me for interrupting you, the big argument was that it would be specific, take time designated to the pickleball and to the tennis court. So that was the big issue, so that they would have to give up. So I just question.
Well, right now, the, the two activities seem to be self-regulating, for lack of a better word.
That's what I asked the question.
Lack of a better word.
Yep.
Um, the folks that are doing pickleball, um, have purchased, uh, portable nets, which are in the storage facility over there, and they actually take, take, take down their lines to play. And, um, I don't believe anybody else in the office reported it to me. Nobody's called me to say, I wanted to play tennis, they were playing pickleball in there, or I went to play pickleball, they played tennis. So far, you know, it seems to be, yeah, it seems to be self-regulating. And if it, it gets to the point where people can't get along, who makes those decisions? Those fine people over there.
He gets to pine it off on us.
Well, it just, there was so much discussion about it. It never seemed to be resolved, so I think it's good to know that it's.
There's certainly, there's certainly, certainly passion that looks recreationalist.
Well.
Quick question, I have to ask you off the head, okay, no, it's the rec committee, they're asking for five hundred dollars for pickleball striking. So they're resuming to the thirteen change and the capital improvement.
Yeah.
It would seem so, yeah.
And I, I guess just, uh, not to lay the point, but then if we don't resurface the tennis courts, there's no sense in budgeting for the striking.
Correct, but as with so many budgets, there, uh, there are hopes and dreams tucked inside of here along with all of the, you know, cruel and hard realities that we live with also, so. Not all of them survive the process.
Well, good information, move the thought for the next time, it has to be paid.
Uh, Main Street sidewalk, uh, we've had, the board's had, um, interest expressed in constructing a sidewalk from Briesmer Park, um, in paralle- roughly paralleling, uh, Route fifty-two or Main Street, uh, in front of the Veterans Park, Veterans Memorial, Honorable, front of the library to the crosswalk that leads to Boat Club. Uh, Boat Club has expressed an interest, uh, estimated the cost, included it here for special for people.
It's sexy if you're, um, in a summative, it's, it probably wouldn't be so dangerous if people went to speed, would it?
Mm-hmm, and if people walked on the proper side of the road, they all walk with the traffic with your bus in.
I happen to travel.
Everybody just needs to do better, I think.
If only this group of people controlled the universe, we would be all set.
The Boat Club has, this year have been almost perfect in having the kids walk across the road as they should, with supervision as they should, down the side as they should with supervision, and there has, it seems to be much better maintaining.
Yeah, so this is, um, more food for thought. And the last one on here is, uh, fire station security system. Um, we had, as we described earlier, an issue that involved an insurance claim at the fire station, um, for, for a water issue. And we looked at having a fire and water detection system installed. And the pricing also for an intrusion alarm, and I can see I can't add.
Just making a thousand.
Fire station doesn't have a fire detector. Is that what that says?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what it says.
Sure, sure it does. Dottie looks out the window and says, what's that big orange glove?
Joan, I think what the, I think what the thought was is it, isn't that a sprinkled building?
There is a sprinkler.
Okay, so I think that's what the thought process was, but times have changed, we've already had water intrusion in there. There are ways of monitoring, uh, the water, you know, the, the sprinklers, and there should be, there really should be a fire, fire system in there.
So that line should be nine, and so the percentage will change. Oh, Caleb, what is the current, uh, harbor savings account balance?
Well.
I mean, I know it, we're gonna spend out of it, but I'm just curious.
The current balance in the harbor savings account as of January thirty-first is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Yep, and the pier decking will be coming out of that.
Pier decking and the float, um, I haven't taken anything, even though we put a deposit on the float, I haven't taken a dime there yet.
Okay.
And we do have some deposits to put in from end of last year and donations and stuff that haven't been moved over to it yet, so.
Will that be moved over for our next go-round on that?
I've been waiting until taxes come, so as long as people start paying their taxes, it will be.
Okay. Anybody have any capital improvement questions, just like, turn the page. Uh, this will be the next of the shortest discussion probably. In two thousand eight, town went out and borrowed money to, uh, do some road improvements, and they bonded the money. And we're gonna be paying this back till fiscal year twenty-three, which I can't believe is rapidly approaching, years away. We budgeted the amounts required, town pledged its full faith and credit to pay the debt, so we're gonna pay. I will note, uh, and everybody else will know, hopefully, that the principal amount is changing, but the interest is changing substantially. Uh, the bonds were reissued a couple of years ago, and a lot of the credits we got are now taken effect, and we're gonna have lower debt service pay. Going to the last page, I don't know how we can do a summary before we get done with all the requests, but here we go anyways. Uh, I'm gonna skip the summary part of the expenditures and jump down to the dread revenue and budget offsets. Uh, this is other mon- last few other monies that we, uh, asked the town to appropriate to lower the property tax burden. Um, boat excise, obviously, if you come register a boat, you pay excise tax on that boat, we get the money. You'll note that it looks awfully low through December, cause people don't usually register their boats in the second half of the year. Uh, vehicle excise, um, you register your vehicles here, town keeps the excise tax money. Local road assistance is, uh, state funds that are giving to us based on the number of miles of town road that we have. Uh, by their formula, we get forty-eight thousand four hundred, that has not been determined for the upcoming year. The best information we have at the current time from Maine Department of Transportation that oversees that is they don't see a substantial change upwards or downwards from what we received this year. It may likely be exactly the same, so we put exactly the same in for what we received thus far this year for the coming year.
And that's, does it negative for roads and care, or is it just allocated?
That is, uh, required, the only way we can get that money is if we certify that we expend that on capital improvements for the roads. Very easy for us because we have a debt service for roads that's in excess of that, so I can certify that in a heartbeat. Um, it would not be particularly challenging for us to certify that anyways, even if we didn't have that debt service, but we did, so. Uh, fund balance, this is, uh, Gary asked a question earlier tonight about what happens to the monies that we don't spend? They go back into our undesignated fund balance? In addition, in addition to that, we also have, um, shall I say, it's a terrible word to use, but I can't think of anything else, excess revenues, um, that go into that. If you look at local road assistance monies, this past year we budgeted forty-seven thousand and forty-eight dollars to come in. We've already got forty-eight thousand four hundred, so the difference between those two goes into unassigned fund balance. The building permits go into unassigned fund balance, the plumbing permits go into unassigned fund balance. Any monies we don't expend goes in unassigned fund balance, any excess revenue beyond what we budgeted goes in unassigned fund balance. Townspeople can vote to use that money for any purpose that they so desire. We're suggesting that that be up substantially, because our unassigned fund balance is up substantially.
See, uh, investment portfolio, the excess over which quarter is, where does that come from?
Um, only ex, only money that goes out of that, any excess money, uh, is what townspeople vote to take out of that.
Would that be, I'm just, where would, what?
Yeah, meaning.
That money fall into, cause that should reduce the tax burden as well.
Correct, and that would show up usually in fund balance unless we were looking to purchase a fire truck. Then we take it out the fire truck fund and we put a line in and said fire truck fund, or something like that.
So that account would be called, what, if we, if we did that, fund balance?
Yeah, it would be, it would show up here in fund balance.
Yep.
David, can I ask you a question about debt service?
Sure.
Uh, what was the total amount that we borrowed in twen- two thousand eight?
Eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Eight fifty?
Mm-hmm.
And we reissued the bond in twenty fifteen, is there?
The Maine Municipal Bond Bank reissued on our behalf because they tell us when they could reissue.
Okay, I didn't know if that was another option for us.
No, we, um, when we borrowed that money, um, we borrowed through the Maine Municipal Bond Bank, which is where we borrowed the funds from. Um, they issued the bonds and you're stuck with what you chose to accept at that time. They, and they decide, what they do is they pool a lot of projects together, and they issue these bonds. And then they decide when and if they're going to reissue them, or, you know, what most people would say, like refinancing your house, reissuing the bonds. And they chose to do that a number of years ago. They did that for the school too, a couple of years prior, doing it for the road bond.
What's the total interest we've paid on that bond to di- this, till last fiscal year?
Uh, we could, we could find that for you, total interest on the bond, yeah, I, I don't know that off the top of the head. Because they, when they sell the bonds, they're at different interest rates. So this year's might have been, you know, two point eight percent, and what we're paying off next year is at two point three percent.
Okay.
Bond market is not, not completely beyond me, but close.
Thank you.
But we have a whole schedule on that, we can just copy and do this for you.
Perfect.
Uh, municipal revenue sharing, um, this I talked about a little bit at the start of the night. Again, is supposedly, not supposedly, is a straight percentage of certain revenues to the state that they in turn return to the towns. Um, and it was originally set up primarily to, um, help towns with property taxes. And that is increasing, in addition to it increasing, um, we have ninety some odd thousand dollars or something in, uh, deferred revenue that the auditor suggests we use, um, to reduce the property, doesn't suggest we reduce, told us we had to. So we added it in there. I'll try to find that exact number if anybody really wants it.
So that ninety thousand five hundred sixty-four?
Yeah. So I would anticipate next year, uh, well, even if, if everything were equal in the cost up and they didn't increase it or decrease it, that that number would be substantially lower next year. And we probably, if we were to continue spending at the same rate, we probably would look to other revenue sources to make that difference. Such as fund balance or excise. And harbor fees and donations, so probably five or six years ago now, the Board of Selectmen added that line to our revenues and budget offsets. We do charge for, um, various fees for the use of the harbor, mooring fees, commercial pier user fees, tour boat fees, there's a whole plethora of waitlist fees. And we do receive some donations, so to, so that all the, in the past, prior to starting this line, any excess revenues that came in for harbor went into the harbor savings account. Uh, and then the board decided to add that line, um, to the budget so that the property taxpayers would be seeing some of the benefit of those harbor fees donation. And that concludes my spiel for tonight, unless you have some more questions. We will continue Thursday night, maybe some weather on Thursday, but full steam air. Thank you all for persevering through to eight-thirty. And by all means, if you have some questions as you go through this, feel free to contact me and that's it. Reed, you look like you've been through a certain time.
Everything's the same, you're figuring the numbers.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.